Okay. We're live.
Well, semi.
Good evening, everyone. I'll call meeting order. We have a full board this evening. Except for an associate position. First up is a discussion, Malcolm McKenzie. Are there, is there more than one copy of the agenda?
Yeah, there.
There's copies of the agenda on the front table if anyone cast. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me tonight. My wife and I are from West Kingston, Rhode Island. We own four and six McPhilip Way. These are two lots that are but Agawam Cemetery off of Great Neck Road. They've been for sale for quite some time. Just briefly background, in 2000 we returned from ministry with the church overseas and out in the west coast and had some capital available and partnered with a college mate who has a Massachusetts builders license and begin several projects in this area. This was to have been the next one in 2006 before the bottom started to erode precipitously as we all know. But I want to say right up front that most of the reason I'm here tonight is because I didn't take care of business. I didn't read the fine print. I trusted somebody else was reading the fine print. And as a result of solid negotiations now, the last couple of months, I've come to realize that there was shelf life on the plan that was approved in 2005. And that secondly, and probably more importantly, that as a part of the approval that this board gave for the development of those two lots, the utilities and road had to be put in first before a building permit could have been pulled. That is my fault for all these years. I've been marketing these lots thinking that we would sell them and that would be a part of the building process as was the case in my naivete when we built homes and put in driveways towards the end of the process. So I come tonight because I have a concrete offer. I have a copy of the plan that was approved for each of you to refresh your memory and I have three questions. My questions are very simple. I've come to ask if you would reauthorize the plan that was approved in 2005. Secondly, am I in a position to put in the utilities as soon as possible before there's some formal either reapproval or some process for the approval of this development plan? And then thirdly, my question is whether it would make any difference because I have a tentative, I have solid interest from a party who wants to buy the entire property just for one home, not for two homes. So.
With that having been said, I'll give you these.
Thank you.
I think they're a few there.
George, if memory strikes me right, these are probably under the covenant of the state granted non-manage extension.
Yeah, that was my next.
Remember the state.
I don't know what the timeframe on the Permit Extension Act was. So you're.
What was the extension?
I don't remember the dates on it, but I was thinking the same thing. It might be covered already.
Yeah.
You, your.
The, the.
Your project may still be alive under the permit extension.
I would hope one way or another can be necessitated.
Yeah. Please, the Commonwealth was nice to investors because when the economy fell flat, they automatically granted, granted you an extension. We just gotta find out exactly when their data is.
I was looking 'cause there was some reference to.
You don't know this is.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We were talking about the ghosts and all that stuff, the graves and stone walls and stuff. Yeah, that was, that was a real thing. Because a lot of times by cemetery, we see drifted over. There might be ghost graves on the other side. They're not always on the plot, no, yeah. There was a study done for that. When you put out your house, you know where this is.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because this is the whole, house they rehab and this is the back too.
Yeah. Yeah, that boy's a coward.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's gonna be one lot. It won't be. That won't necessitate much of a.
Well, the, the thing is to make, well, that doesn't make any difference. It doesn't really frontage. The frontage is created after this, this way was gonna be put in here.
Mm-hmm.
So we still, this way still gotta be constructed. Actually, this one lot is, that's a new issue here. But the way it's supposed to be constructed, it create frontage.
I believe that a wave, there was some waivers granted regarding road construction. I don't see them listed on this particular plan.
I think, I think we announced the gravel road, you know, it's like even little air, that's what I heard.
Yeah.
There, there is a plan similar at least to this that was submitted or is attached to the deed somehow that's dated June 2005. Again, I don't know that, I don't have a copy of that plan and I've never had a copy of that plan. But again, I just provide that for your information.
Well, the first question, if I recall, was would we still support this subdivision? I don't see any reason to re-engineer it.
What's the zoning there? Is it, am I?
It's from the FNC.
I don't know what the current.
Uh, thirty. If your buyer is thinking of constructing one home on it and not using the two, I would think it would be more effective to come in with that plan.
Thank you. The concrete offer is not that offer.
Mm-hmm.
The concrete offer is for the development of the two separate lots.
Mm-hmm.
George, you better be careful when you say that. Because if you said for, for one house, it doesn't make any difference because that way was put in there to create the frontage.
I realize that, but with one house, he could perhaps succeed with a lesser roadway.
Well, a lesser in length, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
As to the dates, I'd have to double check the dates on the Permit Extension Act because it was extended at least twice, as far as I know. So you may still have a valid plan. I know we did see a reference to another subdivision that was done around the same time. No, this pathway might be newer, right?
I think the permits had to be in effect in 2008.
Right.
I don't know when these expired. When this expired.
Well, if it was filed for in 2006, it could have still been.
When was it?
It could have been active in 2008.
Yeah, there was an extension that came in on it. We don't have a, we don't have a copy of that, any extensions.
No, I was looking in the file to see if I had the file on it. It looks as though even if the Permit Extension Act was in effect when this project was live, that it would still need some sort of extension. Because I don't think it's any, the Extension Act has any help anymore, is it?
I don't think so.
No.
August fifteenth, 2008 to August fifteenth, 2010. Then extended for another two years.
Right. Twelve.
Four years total.
Right.
So I don't know when, I don't know when this was done, but the maximum would be four years under the Second Act.
Right.
It was done in oh five, is that the approval date?
Mm-hmm.
Well, if it expired, don't we have to follow the normal procedure? Publication and notice and everything.
Yeah. I think the question was, would he have to re-engineer it? Or could just come back with the same? As I said, there was some, there was some waivers granted to this as to road construction. And did that originally have a, it's not long enough for you to cul-de-sac, right?
No.
Three hundred and fifty.
Did Charlie wasn't here today? I don't know if Charlie would remember it.
Is that, is that correct?
It's a square way, forty seven feet wide. Does it say that? Forty seven feet seven.
Why is that?
There was an easement in there for them to go and repair the stone wall if they had to.
Oh.
Okay. So the, so on this.
Not for the cemetery.
So the right of way is on this side.
Right. Yeah, if I see the coast right here. See the coast?
Yeah, it's a.
It's so.
Yeah.
Didn't know whether it's involved, right?
No, it was just a golf school, not, not the cemetery. It's dead notation.
It's, it's a zone X flood zone or once. I don't know if that's changed.
Did you saw that ghost in there?
I don't know if that flood zone's changed, Mr. Chairman, with that, with the new revisions this year.
The new female apps?
Mm.
Do we ever get things squared away?
Yeah, I know.
This has a twelve foot wide road.
Yeah. Twelve foot.
That's one of the waivers granted.
That was, that was the waiver because it was only to service the two houses.
Yeah.
It was to give them a roadway and give a twenty-five foot buffer to the cemetery.
Basically, what it was, was a glorified driveway.
Hmm. We've been talking sixteen feet.
Right.
Yeah. Well, here we go again, going back in time, things.
Yeah.
We looked at it a little bit different.
Sorry.
And Bob, one of the, one of the issues that we took up when we thought of it that way was this, this road or way would never service any more lots.
Mm-hmm.
Ever. You know, a lot of, a lot of times in cases, like the other day you looked at one when you're talking sixteen feet or whatever, because you know there's gonna be further subdivision down the road on the other lands and there's no other lands to be redone. I think that was some of the thoughts that we thought back then in them days.
Because it ends at the cemetery.
Right. Yeah. Those people don't drive past.
Thoughts?
Maybe we could pull the old file and take a look at what the file says as far as what the planning board in oh five had thought were some considerations. And try to keep it moving that way.
Okay. Has Dave got all your contact information in the planning?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
We will delve into the previous approval.
Very good.
I don't see anything outstanding, but not much has changed other than flood zone, right?
Right. Need to question that.
Which wouldn't really affect us. It would affect how they build, but wouldn't affect two thousand five, one. No, wouldn't create, it wouldn't affect the creation of a lot anyway. But if you let us do a little homework on this and I'll have Dave get back to you.
Fine. All right, I assume then it would be wise to hold off until I hear back from you before moving ahead with the utilities.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good.
I'll try to get that information circulated to everybody so we can not hold yet. All right. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Same to you.
Next is a continued discussion for an A and I of a ninety-six LLC. Got no one there.
Good evening, board members. Paul Maddox with GAF. Senator Henry, we do have a revised plan for you. Taking into consideration some of the comments that the board had at the last meeting.
Thank you.
I don't know what was there.
A couple of revisions that we made to the plan. One was on the remaining land, lot one thousand and nine. We added that note that the existing travel way located on lot one thousand and nine should be widened to a minimum width of sixteen feet prior to any building permit being issued for it. And then also on lot one thousand and nine dash nine, on the top left-hand corner of the plan, we added the note about that easement. And it's the same note that showed up on the original approved plans that were endorsed by the board back in two thousand and ten. That, that the right of way is to be used for roadway purposes and it's subject to the rights that others may have in and over the way known as Squirrel Island Road.
Same thing I said before. Legally, you're not, you can't create different frontage just by saying that. And your frontage is on the traveled way and it's not a hundred and eighty feet.
Bob, if I'm not mistaken, that note on this form A print doesn't hold water.
There's only certain ways you can, and they're trying to create an expanded roadway easement and there's only some ways you can do an easement and just writing it on a plan doesn't.
Right, because on a form A plan, you can't condition it. It doesn't mean anything.
When? You mean in terms of, of changing the, on the lot one thousand nine dash nine?
Yes, but the way it's written on the print, that's written as, as always a condition on the print. So nothing, a building permit can't be.
Oh, you mean down on, on one thousand nine?
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't think you can do that. I think it's either passes or it doesn't. I mean, it's either the road's sufficient or not sufficient.
Right, right.
So as I recall, you said the only way that that can happen is to create a deed recognizing that strip and giving it.
The only way to create an expanded roadway, which is what they need in order to get a hundred and eighty feet.
Mm-hmm.
Because on the traveled way, they don't have it. So they're creating a new easement. But you can't do a new easement unless you've actually deeded it to people. Just putting it on the plan only affects the owners of that lot and anybody who wants to enforce it. But nobody else has that right.
I can see they didn't, it didn't affect the other lots there because they have the hundred and eighty feet. Regardless of whether they go from the traveled way or the, or the right of way.
Which lots are those?
Uh, one thousand nine dash two.
One thousand and nine dash two, yeah.
Well, we don't know what the frontage is on that, do we?
No, I'm just.
Looking for the frontage on which one?
One thousand nine dash two.
One eighty-four.
Well, the distance on the traveled way would be probably the same because
Correct.
they're, they go directly from the lot into the traveled way.
Now, if your frontage went to the traveled way, what would that leave you with?
Uh, if you go in between our property lines, we end up with a hundred and sixty-four on the way. But if you go perpendicular to Squirrel Island Road, then we have over a hundred and eighty feet. But because our line is kind of skewed there, that's why it's only a hundred and sixty-one there. And it is no different than what was previously approved by the board back in two thousand and three for the lots that were on Squirrel Island Road. And then again, approved in two thousand and five, in two thousand and six, in two thousand and ten, and then again, two thousand and ten. And if you go do further research in Wayham down on Mackey Way, and it was, again, the same thing was done on Mackey Way since nineteen seventy-eight as the legal was.
You have to show me where you're getting your one, your one fifty. It doesn't seem like, it doesn't seem like it should be that much of a disparity between the.
On the plan, the one sixty-one?
Yeah, if you went from the, the edge of the traveled way, which is
Well, it's all by the center line of the road.
The center line, okay.
So if you go from this point here to that point, it's one sixty-one. But if you go perpendicular to the right of way, then it would be over one eighty. It would be equal to the one eighty would be two.
So there's a twenty-foot difference there between there and there?
Yeah. That line right here is eighteen feet. But that line if you go here, so eighteen point three eight or something.
Oh, okay.
So to correct it, you have to create a deed for that parcel. But who would it be needed to?
The other people have a right to use the road.
How would you illustrate that?
Well, you could find it out.
I mean, list them all.
Just putting it, this, this could get, doesn't mean that somebody else down the road, the Callahands, can just go in and just do that. They don't have any deeded rights to, to that section.
Well, they have the right to pass over Squirrel Island Road. And then once everybody, once everybody on Squirrel Island Road decides to go ahead and, and bring this road up to the town standards and pave it or, or whatever, all that information's already on the plans for them to go ahead and prepare it and do the takings.
The town, the town's not gonna do a taking. You're, you're relying on a taking that hasn't happened yet.
I said when all the residents on Squirrel Island Road decide to go ahead and proceed with bringing the road up to the town standards, then they would go ahead and prepare the plans to create a layout, bring the road up to the town standards by installing whatever twenty-four feet of pavement, twenty-two feet of pavement, installing drainage, applying with the correct paperwork to get it all set. And then you have all the information to do your takings to get the layout created on Squirrel Island Road.
They don't have any right to use that section.
Who doesn't have any right to use that section?
The other people on the road haven't, don't have any deeded right to use that expanded roadway layout.
I, I disagree with that. Again, we're relying on everything that was done previously in the past and it's the same thing. It's, it's nothing different than what was originally done and approved by the board.
Well, across all those lots on the other side of the road, those, that big section of lots that, that I guess Berry's did was, that was all one piece of land. So those people all take title. That, that's a common ownership. So they're bound by what they have. Doesn't bind the other people does that. The reality is whatever was done doesn't mean that you, that those, that those easement rights exist.
I don't know how to, how to rectify it, other than-
Well, have you consulted with an attorney to find out how you could deed that so that it satisfies the requirements?
I believe what we have shown on the plan satisfies the requirement that we're not interrupting with the rights that people have over Squirrel Island Road. And we've reviewed the deeds of all the people that have bought it, and they don't have any specific language that grants easements to other people, they just say, subject to the rights that others may have over the way known as Squirrel Island Road.
And you're saying that this proposal isn't any different than any of those other people's proposals?
No, I, I, I think it's, it's better than the ones that were done before. I have those original plans here, if anybody wants to look at them, but what we're doing, I think is more kosher than what was previously done.
Well, the only difference as far as the lot goes is, is that fine line between having frontage and not having frontage.
I know, but the ones that were done for the previous lots, the original ones, are worse than what these were.
What, what original ones? Done the same plan here?
Not our plan, it was done by other people, but- None of these lots have frontage on the way at all. And in particular, lot six, only a sixty feet of frontage on the way. And that's the original plan done in two thousand and three. Their frontage doesn't even touch the way.
Who is this done for?
Our party.
Well, he's the owner of the property, he's on both sides of the road.
Yeah, well, he's on both sides of the road too.
I think all we're doing is kicking a cane down the road here.
Again, the fee rates extend to the center line of the traveled way.
That's where it's noted by the road, the only ones that are by the road is lot seven. And lot eight, the lot eight was modified and doesn't go by the road anymore. That would be down here. Lot seven, lot eight would be here. Modification to lot eight is attached thereafter, and it's eliminated from being by the road, and it's a new sideline drive.
Says, see reference plan for status of Squirrel Island Road. Is that, is it that one? No, I'm at the last, I don't know what to, uh-
And those are our flag, is that created the first two lots, and the other ones are black and white, and that's what it's about.
Well, we got a roadway that's not defined that we're defining.
Uh, it's previously defined. Being of various plans, I was recording, I mentioned it.
Does the plan show on a forty foot road?
Well, the original plan that shows a forty foot length of road is this one here. And then our plan in two thousand and ten showed the extension going out to Perry Hill Road.
I think, the question that I have is, our past board's decisions, our applicant has hung his hat on past board's decisions, so does that dictate how future boards must always vote?
No.
So-
Two wrongs don't make a right.
Right, well, that's my question, if, if history shows us that other boards have decided to accept certain situations
Well, this-
that, that maybe are in question today, does that mean that the current board has to follow suit?
This is a good example of what you're seeing right here, Mike, is, um, it wasn't probably done properly that two times before. So we're gonna just, um, you know, put a blind eye to it and let it go, and it's not gonna get any better because, uh, the development's weapon further down the road. And, uh, this isn't, this isn't the end of it, that's for sure. You know, you guys went down to the site plan, and there's quite a bit more property further in. And, uh, the, the attitude of, well, it's not our problem, it's gonna be somebody else's problem, it's not gonna resolve it.
I look at that, at least I thought that the board had to look at each application on its own merits.
Oh, I just, I guess it's the legal issue is, what's, what's the difference between creating an easement and granting rights and creating a deed and granting rights, what's?
Well, I, I don't think it's an attribute of the board to, uh, we don't grant easements. That's not, that's not our job.
An easement sometimes called a, a deeded easement, or a deed of an easement, there, it's a conveyance of rights.
Right, and that's parties involved, not, not by the planning board.
To recording an easement, they're gonna charge you for recording a deed, 'cause that's basically what it is, it's a deed of rights.
Now, now, what would happen, Bob, if, um, say, say if, if, if we rubber stamp this, and this went along, if somebody went down further down the line, they go for title insurance. Is that gonna put up, that's gonna put up a red flag.
No, 'cause they still have access.
Yeah, everybody has access to the traveled way, the question is, is this conformed to zoning? I mean, you can get a variance if they, you know, wanna get a variance because we don't have frontage on the traveled way, but to create a, a roadway, and I suppose you could get everybody on the road to agree to a roadway layout.
Oh, is that where, I, I, that's where, that's why I was puzzled, I was thinking that he could accomplish this just by creating that as a separate deeded parcel and grant rights to it.
He could, yeah, I mean, he could deed rights to the other people who have a right to use the road.
But, but that paragraph on the form doesn't, doesn't do that.
That doesn't, you know, you have to, actually have to deed, deed it, you know.
That's, that's where I was-
Yeah, you're creating a, he, he's creating a, a roadway and giving, he'd have to be giving other people the right to use the road because they're trying to claim the road is now forty feet wide, and, and other people are entitled to use it. You'd have to make that claim in order to move your frontage, to change your frontage. So it would have to be, that entire forty feet wide would have to be a roadway with the rights of other people to use it, you know? They don't have rights to use it. Then your frontage really is on the traveled way, not, not on this new line. You get everybody to agree to it.
So the entire roadway out would have to be created, or just that?
Well, how many people do you wanna have a right to use it?
As far as-
No, you could, you could do that, I mean, you, you could try to get everybody to agree on a forty foot layout, or you could have a deeded easement for this particular section for other people to use it. You could go to the zoning board, get a variance saying, I have a hundred and sixty feet on this. I don't know what else you could do.
It's a board's pleasure.
Let me ask a question. In front of lot one zero zero nine dash nine, the, the piece of land in front of your lot that's in between the, the layout and your lot, who owns it?
Which piece of it?
Well-
That's the piece in question.
All this out here.
Lot S one B?
S one B is owned by, uh, Squirrel Island Stage, which is owned by Mr. Perry.
So in order, um, for in front of that lot, if you needed to make that road sixteen feet, that would be going into, that would have to be widened by Mr. Perry. Did you get down to lot one zero zero nine? You can get into the deed situation that, that Bob's talking about, or? You could almost cut your lot around the road and leave it alone, and then you got frontage on the old way, right of way, and it's not yours. That's the problem I have with it, is, is what happens is, everybody's gonna cut through your lot to use that.
Which currently is being done.
Which is, which is being done now.
Yep.
But, but now you're gonna develop it, someone's gonna go down there and buy it, and they're gonna say, I don't want these people on the road. You, you follow me, that you're gonna get a little nasty down there, so, uh-
But they're gonna be subject to the rights that others have to pass an agreement on that sort of-
I, 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 I hear what you're saying, but that's not always what they do, so... Four hundred and forty-nine feet. Now, I don't know. I'm just wondering if you, you, you take your, from that piece of, from here to there, and, and you loop yourself around it, and the thing stays the way it is, you got nothing to do with it, and you march out of here with no problems. Leaving it the way it is, it's a problem.
Well, the point, the, it's the other lot that, that has created the, the question.
What, this one?
No, the, uh, one thousand nine dash nine. It's just a whole section here, the difference between the center of the traveled way and the-
Yeah, was, they need a hundred and fifty, or they need a hundred and-
One eighty.
One eighty. And the center line gives you one sixty one?
One sixty one, but if you go perpendicular to the center line, you get the one eighty.
Right, I, I, I see what you're saying, on the center line to the sideline, yeah. Is that, is that even considered, or is that?
Right, that's on the issue.
It's all right.
So that's where he has to go, the, the easement, right?
TV's gonna take that up here. It's getting, yeah, starting to see anything down here, it's right. Yeah. And here it is.
Right. But up here, he has this kind of, it's another part.
He has no control of it.
Right.
He just, these guys here, or this guy, wanted to see a basic.
Say, say these guys had a paywall or whatever. They come in with a bulldozer some, right some morning, and they just bulldoze this entire thing out.
They come in with a bulldozer some, right some morning, and they just bulldoze this entire thing out with it, take out whatever their front lawn is, their trees, their driveway, and just wipe it right out. And these people would say, what are you doing? Well, it shows on the plan. And I said, you don't have anything to do with our plan. We didn't give anything to you. This was just a move themselves, but it didn't mean they gave other people down the road the right to come in and just wipe out the front of their, of their lots. They don't have any right to do that. And the same thing's true down there. They didn't give these people the right to go in and just knock down whatever's on front of that lot.
Those other lots don't even touch the road.
Which, which lot you referring to, don't touch the road?
The original ones on the-
That side of the road, all these here.
On the west side.
Yep.
They don't touch the road, and that's not accepted.
That's right, yeah. And it's not defined.
So, does that make it right?
I, I don't know, we're just going again, based on what was previously approved, and that's what we have to hold on to.
These people could enforce it. They all took part of the, like, a subdivision.
There's the engineering there. Handwork doesn't tell you that, and lots have to actually touch the road.
No, it's, it's just has to have frontage on a legal way that's been approved by the board in the past. And again, Square Island Road shows up on various plans approved by the board.
And, and it's logical to leave a forty foot layout, even though it's a winding dirt road, and it's a logical thing to do, it's just...
And, and in nineteen seventy-eight, it started out on Mackey Way, and Mackey Way started that way, too. Every time someone developed on Mackey Way, another forty foot, oh, actually, I think Mackey Way's a fifty foot layout. They just kept on going down and down.
The problem now would be that, oh, number one, you're using it to create your frontage. And number two, if, if all the residents decide they wanna build Square Island Road, this one particular lot and any others in the same position could just say no, and it doesn't happen.
Chances of getting them all to, to widen that road are slim to none anyway. Well, well, the thing is, is, is not just the people there. This Square Island Road goes all the way to the other subdivision. You're talking a, a lot of property down beyond it. You're talking forty-six lot subdivision at the end of Square Island Road. You know, it's just a matter of time, and that gets developed. There's no way in heck people are gonna go the long way to town. Human nature is to go shortest distance between two points. You wanna go to William Center, you wanna go Square Island Road, you're not gonna go all the way around County Road, Perryville Road, that's, that's-
I was gonna say, one's paved and one's not, but County Road's not much better than gravel road, is it?
Well, right, right now, but I'm, I'm, the thing is, it's just a matter of time. You know, you're gonna get a, a town hall full of tax, taxpayers, and they'll say, we want this road fixed, and you have a problem.
So-
I guess the thing, George, could-
Correct, correct me if I'm wrong, right now, it does not meet requirements of frontage?
No.
No.
Can, by simply putting that parcel on a, on a deed, is that the right way, or one way to handle it, Bob?
Doing what?
Is that one way to rectify it, by putting that one strip on a deed?
This is lot one oh oh nine point dash nine, this one?
This is the piece between the, uh, right of the traveled way and the proposed frontage.
Yeah, you could, actually showing that the, you're showing that the right of way on the plan. You could probably deed right off of that.
Well, isn't that-
Three thousand sixty-two square feet right of way.
So, would that rectify it, just by putting that on the deed, that that is...
He'd have to deed it to, to, to give rights to other people, so that it's actually a roadway, you'd have to give them, deed them rights.
Who's talking, this section right here? If, if, if that's the case, this isn't a vehicle to do that, because you couldn't do that on the square meter. That would have to be done in a totally separate drawing.
Those people are, nobody else on the road has anything to do with this plan. They're not, they don't have any rights under the plan, they're not, they're just strangers to this.
Is it sufficient to place it on the deed for one thousand nine that, to all others that may have rights on Square Island Road, or does it need to be attached to each and every deed that's in existence?
You're gonna have to deed it, a deed to those people who have rights to use the road, yeah. Whoever you wanna have the right to use that part of the road. But that's dictated by ownership on the road, correct? Whoever have rights to use the road, I'm, I'm assuming that those people all have, must abut the road.
Again, I'm puzzled, and, and notating it, noting it on the deed and, I mean, on the approved plan, doesn't, doesn't accomplish it.
Doesn't give anybody else the right to go ahead and, and do that. They're not, you're not giving them any rights. They're not specifically referenced.
So, they would have to prove that they legally have, have rights to Square Island Road.
This document doesn't do it.
They didn't, they, they have to have rights to use beyond the roadway up to this forty foot layout. And they don't, and nobody's given them those rights.
So, what happens to the people that are down the end of the road, and they come up here, and they have to come into, I won't use their names, but lot S seven, lot S six, S five, S whatever, and they gotta come into all that property that's down there? There was fencing down there and shit, where's the forty feet end? It, it's gotta come into both sides, so, you, you follow me? Just because that dirt road down there, where the edge of that is, that doesn't mean that's the edge of the forty feet, and it all goes towards this guy's lot. That may be-
Right.
-ten feet from where the line is, which means all these people over here could lose ten feet, or, or whatever the layout might be, if these people down here wanna make that a forty foot road. So, you know, you, you're telling one guy that, that his piece of, of land here, he, he's gotta be prepared to extend it to forty feet, and then where the center of the layout that's there, I mean, are you taking the center of what's there, or are you taking, are there, is there, is there...
It's the center of what's there today.
The, the center of what's there today.
Correct.
So, what I'm asking you is, is an engineer, is there a center line of that road somewhere, on a deed somewhere, or on a, on a, on a plan and, and the registry or whatever, that you can go down there and find it?
No.
So, that, that's, so they wrote down it's a forty foot way, but a forty foot from where? The center of what's there.
Center of what's there today.
That's ludicrous to sit here and-
Well, mathematically, everything is connected to all the monuments that are shown on this plan. So, if you go out there and you locate two or three monuments, you're able to reestablish these lines on, on the plan, on the ground.
All right, so, so there are monuments out there then?
Correct.
So, do you follow what I'm saying in, in, in defense of possibly arguing with myself to, to help you out here? Is, is the center of what's there, um, if some of butter way down, down the end of the lot wants to deal with this, if, if they're the one that wants to use this land and say, no, I'm putting, what did you say, you're going down there, forty-six houses, Mike?
Forty-six, yeah.
Forty-six down the end. So, they go down there, they wanna come up here. Well, we'll widen it. Okay, I don't think they will, but okay. Well, what are they gonna do? They're gonna dig on your side, or are they gonna wind up cutting into these, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven?
Well, they would get a surveyor out there, and the surveyor would tie into all these monuments, recat all the plans and rackets that are out there, establish the property lines that are shown on all those plans.
Right.
And then they would mark out where the forty foot right of way is, and then they would prepare their, uh, clearing limits, or whatever they need to do to make the road wider.
All right. So, legally, uh, putting it on this plan doesn't help, but, but in the deed of the lot or whatever, or if they went through zoning or whatever, why could it not be worded on, on the deed of one oh oh nine and dash nine? Legally, can't they put something at the, the right of the public? Because who knows who owns all that?
Well, they have to deed it to somebody. They have to give somebody the rights to do that. Who are they gonna give the rights to? And they can give them to the town, but I don't think the town wants to really get it off of them.
Yeah, I'd like them to fix my road, I don't think they're going to, but anyway.
They could give it to a lot of other people.
I know it. Um...
Yeah, what if these people-
I don't know how to help you. I, I see what, I see what, you know, what he's saying legally, but you, you could be writing deeds to, to, how many people on down there?
Well, it's all the forty-seven lots that are on Square Island Road, which I believe was seventeen, and have houses on them. And then the other, whatever, whatever number of lots that are left don't have houses on them. But again, I know my client's not willing to spend the money to go ahead and write easements for all forty-seven lots that exist on Square Island Road.
Right.
It hasn't never been done before. Again, on the plan, it just says it for roadway purposes. So, for roadway purposes, it's there to be utilized for the widening of the road and installation of utilities, whether it's, uh, continuing running the water line, that a portion of the water line does exist on Square Island Road for the very first lot there, one thousand nine dash two. But if they decide to put any underground utilities, there's utility poles that are up there now for overhead, uh, wires. That's what the roadway, that's what the easement's for, for roadway purposes. And I'm sure when you have all your neighbors and the butters come together and they wanna pave the road, I'm sure there's gonna be two or three people that'll say, no, I don't wanna do that, it's gonna cost me, whatever, ten thousand dollars. They're not gonna be willing to spend the money, 'cause some people don't have that kind of money to be spending at that time.
When you did two thousand nine, one thousand nine dash two, you didn't, you used the roadway for your frontage distance. Didn't you have a hundred and eighty-four feet?
Yeah, we used it in both places. You used it at the roadway, and you used it at the right of way.
When you had, you, you designed it so that you had a hundred and eighty-four feet on the traveled way, which is fine, but you, you don't have it here.
We don't have it within our property line, but if you go perpendicular to the center line, then you have it.
You didn't use it, this created setback line in order to get a hundred and eighty feet of frontage. You used the, the traveled way.
On the other one, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, on the other lot, it didn't make a difference.
Well, the plan itself, that created it, if the frontage line is, is showed by the road.
Mm-hmm. On this particular corner, it does make a difference. Well, let's, uh, have an action sometime. We have a public hearing scheduled, so, it's, uh-
Is this something that could be reviewed by the zoning board of appeals?
That's one way to rectify it.
So, they can withdraw without prejudice, so we can deny it, they can go to board of appeals and come back.
I think we had this discussion last meeting.
Yeah, I don't think you could, they can withdraw it.
I'm trying to think zoning, I, uh... I think the, I think the one thousand nine dash nine, I think zoning can help you out with, with the, I don't, it's, I think it's, it, it's a variance, though, from one sixty-one to one eighty. Um... Probably make some good discussions on why that would work. I think the biggest kicker is down here.
One thousand nine?
I see that, I see that one as the problem, is, is, uh, i- i- if, if that road has to be widened or what have you, it, it comes all the way by this lot seventy-four, lot S seven rather, map seventy-four. That guy, who knows what, what's, where that line is, the existing traveled way is all the way in on, on one piece of property. You've got a hill down there, you could lose an awful lot of, you could lose a lot of property there, that'd be a battle and a half.
Well, I think that's, that's the argument is, without, without identifying that and granting people rights to it, they could be limited to the existing traveled way, period.
Yeah, well, I, I understand what the, what the applicant is saying, though, to, to come up with a deed for forty-seven different people is, is-
I agree.
Is, is tough. Um, but what happens, you, you, you know, you, you have to defend the, the next one coming up. Once we get by your lot, there's a lot of road left with, with land on both sides. We get into the same question I had with the layout, with the bounds that are down there.
Where are they?
The existing traveled way may, may wind up thirty, forty feet on someone else's property, and they say, no, I wanna move. Someone's gonna protect the rights of those people. So, we let you come down here and say, well, okay, I'll let anybody do what they have to do there. That's easy to say now, until they bring a dozer down there and they start cutting forty or fifty feet out of the front of your property, or deeper because of the hill, tree lines and everything else, then, then you'd be upset, you know? Then you'd say, no, no, no one else had to do it. Well, sorry to say, my friend, I wasn't here in two thousand three, two thousand four or five, I was on zoning, but, um... I think what we have to do is, is, you, you gotta start somewhere. Unfortunately, I think this, this thing is gonna be a problem.
If they did go to board of appeals and get a hundred and sixty odd feet approved, it still leaves that strip of land in limbo.
Well, that, that's the thing, the, the-
It just makes, it just makes it illegal, that's all.
Makes it illegal, ma- means you can sign the plan.
So, it'll be in just as much question over that strip of land as all the other ones?
Question about all the other strips as well.
Well, I-
But it does, it, there is that one question about can, can you put a condition on the building permit on that second lot that you raised, or you just say to them, you know, if you came back and it was now sixteen feet, and you had a variance, we'd sign the plan?
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying, the only argument that he might have zoning wise is that all the lots on the other side of the street, he's saying, don't actually abut on the road. There's a strip of land in between there as well, you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well, you know what?
It's that same strip.
It's that same strip, so you, you're, you're up against it, so...
Yeah, we, we don't know what the frontage is actually.
I understand that, but, you know, he's not gonna go down and lay out the whole road and show us everybody else's problems for his two lots. You might be better off with the zoning issue on that and get your frontage taken care of, and go from there.
Your pleasure.
That one doesn't even bother me, the, the old one.
I know you'd like us to just sign it and go away, but...
Well, my client wants a determination made, because whatever he needs to do after this, he's gonna do. So, if the board doesn't wanna sign the plan for whatever, for the reason that it doesn't have sufficient frontage on the way, then that's fine.
That's what we'll do then, and it's a motion to deny.
Would you rather do that or withdraw?
Well, I got another plan for the lot on Blackmopon Road, just the one on Blackmopon Road, you decide.
Which one is that?
Lot one thousand nine dash eight, 'cause they wanna at least sell that lot, and then they'll deal with, um, remaining land and the issue with Square Island Road at a different date.
Is this another here we're going to now?
No, it's the same, same lot, I'm just gonna-
No, it's the same, same lot. I'm just gonna.
He's removed, he's removed this from the.
Because nobody has an issue with this one. Lot one thousand nine dash eight. Frontage on Blackmopon Road. So my client wants, you know, this is that one, sorry. But you can sell that lot. Get rid of it. And then proceed with whatever he needs to proceed with Square Island Road.
Oh, that, that's a public way.
That's up there, yeah. That's the third lot.
So a whole lot of deadness going on.
So if you want black and white print of just lot one thousand and nine dash eight, I have them here with the MyLar.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Initially-
You said a bog road?
Yeah.
Initially, when this parcel came up, this whole parcel, you guys were talking about putting the, uh, a road near it, but you couldn't get any because of all the wetlands.
Right.
Okay.
This is an easement staying in place? But that's a, that's an easement that will stay in place at least. Oh, it's not an easement. Oh. Yeah, okay. I didn't know if you were trying to keep it for the applicant, like the cranberry grower.
So, so, so the first, first one in front of us, Judge, you're gonna deny it from first, right?
Square Island Road.
Or you're gonna withdraw? Square Island Road.
Well, withdraw that one, Square Island Road. And submit this plan as a substitute, so that way lot one thousand nine dash eight gets approved.
Okay.
So, we still have this creating a building lot on Squirrel Island Road, which is about sixteen
He's withdrawing that.
feet.
It's remaining land.
He's dividing this into two lots.
This is the new- This is the new plan?
On the road.
That's the same thing.
Well, it doesn't have lot one thousand and nine dash two. I mean, one thousand and nine dash nine.
Yeah, it just-
You're doing-
But it still has lot one thousand and nine.
Well, it's a remaining land. You're never gonna get rid of lot one thousand and nine. That one has frontage on Ferring Hill Road.
Okay, nine, nine's one contiguous lot now.
Yep.
Okay. See it, Mike?
No.
This is yours.
Why didn't you do that with?
Yep.
Nine, yes, nine.
Why didn't you put all that frontage for this one?
We made two lots on this one. This is one lot. Okay, so he's not cutting this in half. So this is, this is one lot. So it's only, only, so you're looking for one thousand nine is one buildable lot also?
Well, it's a remaining land, yeah.
Separate buildable lot. A separate buildable lot.
Yeah.
No, it doesn't comment on whether it's buildable or not. It's just a lot of land.
Surely looks.
They're never, they're never one way. So now we're gonna get the frontage for one thousand nine?
On Ferring Hill Road.
So now you have a hundred and ninety-three feet on Ferring Hill. Because that parcellade that you were gonna do is still part of your land.
So, so, so now those people, you still gotta come up with a deed right of way for those people across that property?
We're not gonna go there. That's a different issue to deal with, because that's, that's, Squirrel Island Road's been there forever, and nobody else has given deed of rights to everybody else, and my client's not gonna be willing to do that.
Well, why, why isn't the frontage on, on Square Island? There's four hundred and something feet there, both sides of the road.
That's what it is, right?
Good point. Now the parcellade, now the parcellade becomes, goes back to, to lot nine.
That's.
Am I missing something?
It does have-
Why, why did it change?
What changed?
It's got a hundred and ninety-three feet.
The frontage.
Nothing changed.
That's, that's what I'm saying. The frontage for one thousand nine is-
These people here, now they'll have a way to go across.
Is on the traveled way.
Yeah, I know, but we're not cutting that out anymore. So it goes to the Ferring Hill Road if you want. It could be Square Island Road. It could be wherever.
Yeah, nothing's changed on that.
I know.
That's, that was my point. It's still got frontage. It had frontage before. It's cut it now. I agree with you. I may not have sounded that way.
So the only question I have then, Mr. Chairman, to you is, is the plan that was submitted, that he's gonna withdraw, and he's, and he's substituting this second one in. Can he do that?
It wasn't, uh, I'm confused. It wasn't specifically listed that way on the agenda. It was listed as a, as an A and R for ninety-six LLC, which is part of that plan, so. I don't think it's, I don't think it-
So he's using this hundred and ninety-three feet.
Correct.
So if there's a-
We still got this, we can see.
But there's a right of way here that separates that nature from that. That's why I should go to that one.
You've got, you've got a hundred and fifty.
Not on the plan, but he's cut from the revenue deed. Strip of land that's on every one of them. All the plan he gave here, I don't know.
That is a problem down there.
Why is it? You can go by the center of the traveled way. He's still got, he's still got frontage. Questions?
No.
Motion, please?
Well, I think move to, to sign the revised plan. He has frontage, two lots both have frontage on a public way, and they both have a hundred and eighty feet.
Yeah, a second.
So there's a motion to endorse.
A second.
Plan dated the autumn of seven fourteen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
What, what's that mean?
I said aye.
Oh, okay. Uh, this is.
Flying by.
How many more days till Christmas? I don't count this.
Well, my grandson hasn't got me doing that yet.
George, I didn't want to have to sign this, right?
Me or Michael, yeah.
Michael, you, you can see what you're doing.
I always can, but he always signs.
Very good. So much for the easy one, sure. Uh, J.C. Engineering, Hain Grove Estates.
That's who we just did.
Ninety-six LLC.
Yeah.
That's what I was going.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped over the Hathaway Estates. I'm sorry.
Sit down, sir.
Nice to see you. Thanks for stopping by.
Trying to sleep and sneeze right in here.
Uh, permit extension for Hathaway Estates is for Larry Goldstein. Is anybody here for that? I guess we're just having a conversation on it then, I guess.
She won't send them all.
Uh, there's a letter in your packet.
Yep.
Regarding the, uh, Hathaway Estates Townhouse Project. That was a cluster development between Hathaway and Route Six. They were, they were saved by the Permit Extension Act, which they believe their approval is valid through April fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. Now, this is October, and they asked to be on the next agenda.
Yeah.
Not here. Um, they're requesting a one-year extension.
Do we know when they were originally approved?
Did it say here?
No.
No. I mean, we can recheck his calculations to see if he's.
That file would be in the planning office.
Mm-hmm.
So he wants to go to two thousand sixteen? April or, or from today?
Well, let's, let's, um, double-check the timeframe to see if it's correct before we extend something.
So we'll do that next meeting?
Yep. He's got till April fifteenth by his calculations, so. If that's, um, if that's okay, I'll look for a motion to adjourn now.
Second.
Come on up.
Is this an easy one?
Of course.
He thought you was confused before.
Yeah, I'm gonna get dizzy now.
He's been sneaking all night.
Thank you, John.
Look at Mike's.
He's going to make my arms, huh? What's going on here?
Hi, good evening. The Director, John Churchill, J.C. Engineering. Uh, this is Hain Grove Estates, which was approved in two thousand and eight. Uh, what you have before you, uh, was just due to the timeframe. I have the approved fourteen-sheet plan, just to refresh your memory, if you were aware of it on the board. And all we're looking to do is get endorsement on the approved plan, which I put in front of Mr. Barrett, as well as a covenant, so that we can, uh, record this MyLar and covenant according to requirements to finally bring this project forward. Sorry. March two thousand eight, you received a two-year extension in two thousand ten, uh, plus the four-year tolling period. Puts us into March of two thousand fifteen, where we need to commence the project, which we plan on commencing, uh, December, January. I have the approvals. Pretty much anything that you needed, I pretty much have. Make sure.
What, what streets are the, is the, is the new? IDM Road.
IDM Road.
Is the proposed?
Correct, the left side of Chashmont. IDM, Puffin, and Catamaran are the three old road names.
I heard about this, but never saw this.
Okay. I think you went to some in the meeting as, as your, uh, I think a liaison, I believe. I, I think you did, because you had some, you asked some questions to me. Yeah.
All right, so get, uh, Puffin is the, who came up with that?
That was the previous subdivision that was approved in nineteen seventy-one, seventy-two.
Right.
So that's why on the MyLar that we've, uh, put in front of, uh, Mr. Barrett, and we've checked with, um, Peter Murphy from nine-one-one, he's the supervisor, uh, on the roadway names, I have an email from Mr. Murphy. So even though we put it on the MyLar, we're still not stuck with those. What we'd like to do is Jordan Way for IDM Road.
On the left.
On the left, correct. Just because, uh, nine-one-one, they like to have one road. Because they don't write a lot, so they don't want to have IDM on the right.
One can't go on the left, and one can't go on the right.
So I got, uh, Puffin Lane to John's Lane. IDM to Jordan Road, and, uh, Catamaran to Skipper's Way. And Mr. Bichette is still trying to figure out the exact process on how to deal with naming and, and lot numbering, or house numbering, if you will. So this plan doesn't change or lock anybody into any particular road names. Um, if I have to go in front of the roadway commissioners or Mr. Bichette's office, the planning board office can actually agree with these names, whatever the process is. But, uh, those three names are not taken right now, so those names make sense.
Three streets you're putting in.
This is three streets, yep. The Catamarans are two lot.
So these are extensions of existing streets.
No, these, these were.
Yeah, paper streets.
Yeah, there was gonna be a four hundred and something houses down there.
How many acres of open space do they leave, John, do you know?
I believe it's parcel nineteen.
All we see is the, is the cul-de-sacs. Is there something?
No, it's all the woods.
In fact, some of those-
Eighty-five acres of open space.
Some of those have been rescinded.
Yeah.
In exchange for that, you got the cluster zoning.
Correct. The eighteen conventional, uh, lots that we could have constructed, and what we did is we pulled all the development back um, off of three existing cul-de-sacs that were there, um, and, uh, got the eighteen lots. Total of eighteen, yeah. Actually, IDM Road actually is not a cul-de, that's a through over the dam.
Yeah.
Um, but we have a cul-de-sac for a turnaround on that piece, as you can see.
You got a plan showing all three?
You have a plan, uh, two roads and then one probably.
Are you going before Puffin?
Yes, it is. South of Puffin.
If I live on Seawood Springs, I can drive up Skipper's Way and turn around and you're front, yeah?
Yeah, that's why you see the access easement on there, because the old right-of-way. Um, it's been, the lawyers have been talking about it, and depends on who has-
Previously, you came in on another parcel up there. You came in and removed all those underlying
We did. We did. Two attorneys believe that we don't need to create, keep that easement. One attorney, the one that's writing the title insurance policy, believes you do, so. He, he supersedes even the other two attorneys, so. We decided to, uh, call that the access easement, if you see one Skipper's Way. I, basically, the house of the right has the right to go down and, and construct that road to that point. But, um, you know, I think that's a little stretch that they would need to ever go construct, uh, a roadway down there. They have frontage on Chashmont Road. There would be no need for them to extend Catamaran another hundred and sixty feet.
John, today we're just looking at three roads for-
Correct.
Catamaran, Puffin.
And IDM.
So all these others that are top sale, main sale?
Those are all part of the nineteen seventy-one.
Are you gonna do those as well, John?
Remember, this was a, this was done as a cluster, you pulled everything back over the creek.
If I had a composite, I can show you.
So will this be future development, John, on this side?
If someone potentially could, here's the nineteen seventy-one plan, just to give you a perspective of the previous. They would have to come down what we call Jordan Way, and that's why you see the right-of-way extension pass for a lot. They would have to construct that.
So they have two means of entrance and egress?
Well, they need planning board approval, put it that way. That's not something we propose against Hydham, already. So Hydham Road, it is a Chashwon Road, this is Hydham Road. I'll turn around this here, bring the right-of-way to the end of the lot and leave it there. So if they want to, this is part of the open space, this is part of the project, all to the south. To the north is owned by one property, and mostly the town actually owns property up in here, so.
John, that, this, this ringing a bell now. So Hydham Road where you proposed the cul-de-sac, the easement, for the land that's out beyond it, on the upper pond and the lower pond, that's the culvert. Is that not the one that the Cranberry Company, she came in, she wanted to use that, and I want a right-of-way to it, I'll buy the land? That, that, remember that? I remember it now, I remember this hearing, how Mr. Chairman...
She, she has the right, yes, they, they have the right to do, um...
They control the dam.
They control, they have the water.
So should we cancel your own, John?
See, I don't know, I, I, I missed that, I missed that whole thing with, with water rights and the right to use it, I don't, I don't see. Because I'll...
Never did. Yeah, I guess, yeah, years and years and years ago, the company was connected on the right, so they had the right to control that culvert.
No one ever proved they had control.
Yeah, I know.
So they start with here.
They start with here, and they start with here, there's two dams. This one here is on the property here, but this one here, there was, there was, uh, easement on town, it's a lot of control in the primary industry, it's very significant. Good example is the tree on there. These control the Hydham for hundreds of years, it's got problems, and now it's bad at the time, so we're gonna fix it. Because if that goes, everything from here to four ninety-five will be a ripple, because it is a...
Seth Marata also... Seth Marata also to the north, I'm saying.
No, that's the town, and so this is the structure. This is the previous plan, to give you perspective of what, this is Chashwon Road.
See, that's what it looks like to hide lots of houses.
Right, and this is, what I did is I married the open space. Based on what you're promising, the previous hearing says, you know, people rights and people rights and things like that.
John, is the difference between the approval date and your doorstep gonna cause a problem?
No, no, John, your doorstep date will be today.
And the approved date is...
April seventeen.
He's doing these, he's doing these three.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing in question is that it was approved in two thousand and eight, there was a two thousand, a two-year extension granted, and then he fell within the purview of the four-year automatic extensions. Is, is that all we have to really consider here, sir?
Yeah.
It's this, right?
Right, that's, if this was approved in March two thousand and eight, by March two thousand and, that's not, that's two thousand and ten. Is that, am I, am I missing something?
I, I don't know. What is your...
My question is not so much that we have to review the plans that John's presented, it's we need to confirm the dates that this was originally approved, and make sure there's been no disruption in approval, so that we can sign today, is that correct?
That, that sounds good.
So how, we, I mean, John said that it was a two-year extension granted, which I'm sure he can show us the dates, and then there was an automatic two-year extension. Correct? And then there was a second automatic two-year extension. So that would bring you to March two thousand and fourteen?
When was the approval date, or else?
What's occurring from March two thousand and fourteen to today? Correct, that's his question.
Actually, it was a two-year permit, basically. It's a two-year permit?
It's a two-ten.
Right, it's a two-year permit, and then you have the four-year tolling period, which basically August of two thousand eight to August two thousand twelve almost. That doesn't exist. And then during, in January of two thousand ten, to preserve our right for another two more years, we asked for a two-year extension as well. So we actually had eight...
That wasn't granted as an automatic extension that you actually got?
We came to the planning board and actually received, and I have the minutes of the meeting for that.
But that was an automatic at that time, right?
It was, but we wanted to make sure, again, we, luckily we did it, because as you just said, it would have only been a six-year permit. We asked for, we actually got eight years. Because the four-year tolling period, the two-year original, plus the two-year extension that we received.
As long as that two-year extension wasn't just a byproduct of the automatic extension?
Nope, it was, we asked for the planning board's extension. And in that conversation, I believe they said basically, so this means we're gonna extend this to two thousand, due, because of the tolling period. The, the board actually, if you look back at the minutes, they actually acknowledged that this is...
Did you have those minutes?
I have the approval. Minutes kind of vague. But the discussion was, you know what I mean, if you go back to the tapes.
How many lots total?
There's eighteen lots total. Let me check the tapes, we, we acknowledged that we were within the tolling period.
So, okay, so you got, you got approval in March two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten, you got a two-year extension, right into two thousand and twelve. There's an automatic two-year extension in two thousand and twelve. To April two thousand and fourteen. Does that second automatic two-year extension apply, Mr. Chairman, automatically? So would that give him till two thousand sixteen?
Sounds like, sounds like two of the extensions are running concurrently, don't they?
Yeah, they kind of were, I mean, you got the two, the four-year tolling period basically means as that, that that four years gets added on to the end of all the permits. What we have is we have the original permit.
With no end date?
With no end date, exactly.
Probably lying on your...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, we've had the attorneys look at this as well. Basically, what you have is you have the two-year approval, well, it's a seven-year approval, but a two-year for substantial roadway construction. So we came back in front of them, in front of the planning board in two thousand and ten, and asked for a two-year extension. And they said, well, you know, we're within the tolling period, we said we'd still like an additional two years on the end of that. And then it just so happened that the tolling period went another two years again.
Yeah.
So therefore, we have basically eight years from the two thousand and eight. Is my understanding.
In two thousand and eight was approved, in two thousand and ten, they asked for a two-year extension, which was approved by the planning board.
To, to, to two thousand and twelve?
To two thousand and twelve, but John's saying that because there, there was two, two-year automatic extensions, he's saying that that second automatic extension would automatically apply, which would bring them to two thousand and sixteen. That's his position, he's swearing to it.
Yeah, I mean, we, we made sure we preserved, we made sure we preserved the permit, I mean, he's...
It extends for four years beyond the otherwise applicable expiration date, any permit or approval in effect.
No, extension.
Say it again.
Which is...
It extends for four years beyond the otherwise applicable expiration date, any permit or approval is in effect. So they got a two-year extension to...
They got a two-year extension, two thousand and ten to two thousand and twelve.
Twelve.
So if it extends for four years, that brings them to two thousand and sixteen.
So that's why he's here.
And then when was it in two thousand and twelve that they got...
August.
No, it was April seventeenth that it was approved.
What was August?
It was not in August, it was all about March and April, I believe, of the timeline.
So April...
Oh, August was the Permit Extension Act.
It was March nineteenth.
Yeah, August was the Term Extension Act, those were the Augusts, those are the four years that...
August fifteenth, yeah.
August fifteenth of two thousand eight, uh, ten, and August fifteenth of...
But it was an extension from March, from April seventeenth.
Right. That was not an automatic extension, it was a planning board extension.
Right, did he ask?
Right.
Yeah, I remember.
So we have four years from the planning board, and then four years for the tolling period.
That's what that says, right, Mr. E? Four-year extension.
You got a four-year extension for...
Well, we have the original two years, and then a two-year extension.
George, were the conditions on this and stuff?
That was in effect during that period. For the otherwise applicable expiration date, and the expiration date was two thousand and twelve?
His was two thousand and twelve. Would have been April two thousand and twelve. And at that time, he was eligible for the automatic two years, which would bring him to April two thousand and fourteen. And John's position is that he would also be eligible for the second two years automatically, because he's entitled to four years of automatic extensions.
On the basis that the two-year extension was...
It was a planning board extension, it was, it did not reference in those minutes that it was being considered as one of the automatic extensions.
Correct. And in the, in the tape, if you go back to the tape, the planning board acknowledges that it would be two thousand and sixteen that they granted it. So that's why I said that two, those two, um, yeah.
Should bring the tape to...
I didn't think I had to.
I'm good. Mr. Chairman, is there anything else we need to consider, John?
Yeah. So developing the stormwater management and maintenance plan. You have all that?
You going through the conditions?
Yeah.
Um, we do have a storm maintenance plan, we submitted that back in oh-eight, but we need to tighten up a couple of conditions prior to construction, as you can imagine.
Okay. With the final approval, subsidy plan shall work with the town engineer and directive of mental maintenance. Rules and regulations, okay?
The conditions.
No work on Sundays at all, are they? Shall, the site shall not be clear cut. But we're looking for, Mr. Chairman, I'm getting to the roads, getting to the roadways also. What do you remember on that, George, anything?
What's your...
My question is, when, when these roads get put in now, um, um, they need to be built properly, they need to be paved properly, the drainage needs to be right, that, that's all I'm looking at, so.
That should be in the, yeah...
Yeah, I'm, I'm reading all that.
Yeah, it needs to conform to the fourteen sheet plans that we submitted, which have all the, um...
Road construction.
Road construction requirements as well as...
Yeah, you, you're familiar with, with zoning and planning and wareham, and, and the developers will be for us all the time with not doing the roads properly. And I'm just not trying to be sarcastic, but I live right across the street, and I want to make sure that it's done right.
Of course it is. Well, again, you have a town engineer, you saw that item about the town engineer's gonna be, I'm assuming the town engineer's gonna be overseeing all construction.
Yeah, I would hope so, yeah.
And just as you will coordinate all inspections for them.
Is that what the condition was, coordinate all inspections, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, that were the only two comments I had, was, Mr. Chairman, is, is that the, that the roadways are built out properly and, and paved according to what...
It's undergone peer review, previously, I believe, it would have, before we approved it. What he will have to do now is arrange for the inspections to make sure that executed properly.
Correct. So.
We all set?
Yeah, I, I'm all settled.
I believe so. I don't think we need the...
Mr. Bichette asked that we, uh, leave one for you for the file.
I usually do two.
Okay. That's why I gave you some money.
Give one to lose.
Yeah.
Do we need to vote? Uh, why not, just... Motion to endorse the Mylar.
So move it.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this now you, John, or is this someone else?
What's this?
Are you developing this, or is it still Marata?
Uh, no, I think, uh, it depends where ownership...
Alan Paylor?
Hi. Did you say miss that?
Marata still left?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, uh, I'd say this, uh, this is the last that he wants up in this area.
Yeah, he's pretty well out of it now, isn't he?
The other guy's still...
Just mean the taxes...
Think of the special care down there.
Yeah, that's all I care, is the road part of it, you can vote on it. I know the houses you did down the other end are nice, I would worry about the building.
That would have all been done when he filed in the first place, so... Was there an arrangement made for the taxes back in this region?
There is, yeah, and there's arrangement in place for this, this can't get recorded until taxes pay. So this, this has to be placed in the attorney's hands, and swap takes place.
Have to sign the deal outside now. And... I will sign them and put them in the... That has to be notarized, right?
No, not yet.
Is that our copy, or you need a signature?
I'll give it, give it back once it's executed.
You want all of us on that?
It's up to you, no, if you, if you have the power, you can actually...
Resurrecting something very old.
That was an easy one.
You look at John when you said that?
Thank you, guys.
Alright, thank you.
Take care.
Thank you for your patience, everyone. And with that, I will. Uh, we have a public hearing for Form C subdivision plan, Meredith McNeil, Eleanor Estates, care of GAF engineering. No, that's not it, I'm just getting it out of the way. Which one is that? Is that ninety-six, is that the first one or the second?
Yeah. I think that's the second. Yeah, this is the first.
I think it is. I've got any of the second copy of this.
Yeah, take that one. This one we don't need, right?
Good night. Good evening, board members, Paul Mattels with GAF Engineering on behalf of.
We get the paperwork up. What's the name of that one?
Eleanor Estates. Remember right here, Meredith McNeil, Eleanor Estates.
Hayden, Hayden with the ninety-six at Holsey.
Yeah. That was cool. Can you just? I'll check that, Mister Chairman. Yeah, I don't know.
Do you need to get, can I get the list?
Yeah. These are separate from the, do you wanna do the list, you already have?
I'll do the list.
S- sorry, Paul, one second. Ready?
Yeah.
Is the plan, is it?
Yep.
It's a known, I have some books on it, I think this is, I can find out.
Yep, on the Noah, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Robert Santos.
Uh, yep.
Francis.
Kinda put two and two together there, you know?
Trustee of Tom Brady.
No.
Yep.
I think that just sort of said it's a copy of the legal ad.
Oh, okay, thank you.
She's the owner, and that's just a copy of her getting the legal ad.
Matthew and Cindy Rhodes. Dean DeGus.
There's Slavens maybe?
Edgar Rossi. Benjamin and Nina.
The Tocos.
Yeah.
Just two last subdivision.
Benjamin. Yep. Two.
Melanie Cannon. Well, I would have to be.
Yep.
Meg Vaughn.
Yep.
Noel Whitman.
Yep.
Matthew Stommel, Stommel.
Stommel. Yep.
Uh, I guess, uh.
Yep.
What else we have there?
Uh, Benjamin said that there's a bunch of them. Probably all the same, uh, Robert Wallace.
Robert Wallace, those. Benjamin said, Lena said, some said it from the trust.
Yep. Robert Wallace.
Who else you missed?
Uh, Matthew Rhodes and Alma White, White Estate. Uh, we got them twice. Says a Matthew and Cindy Rhodes person trustee of Rhodes County Trust, which is definitely.
Matthew and Cindy Rhodes trustees for Rhodes County Trust?
Yep.
Uh-huh.
I'm not seeing Robert Wallace yet, let me check again. I don't see Robert Wallace, and I didn't see Alma White.
No, 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 Alma White comes up twice, uh, Matthew and Cindy Rhodes, Alma White, uh, I trust.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see Mister Wallace or Alma White. Check again, I could have missed something.
Right on the envelope, right in front of you.
Robert Wallace.
Alma White, what thing is this, under Matthew and Cindy Rhodes?
About Alma White, White Estate?
Yep, that's it.
Yeah.
Profile.
Okay, all set?
Thank you.
All set?
All set.
Alright, uh. In accordance with the provisions of chapter forty-one, section eighty-one T, Master and Wallace Way and Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, November tenth, two thousand fourteen at seven o'clock, room three twenty at the William Multi Service Center, forty-eight Marion, Marion Road, yeah, fifty-four over there. Uh, William asks to consider the application of Meredith A. McNeil, eleven Lincoln Circle, Paxton, Mass., care of GAF Engineering, two sixty-six Main Street, Wayham, for the approval of a definitive subdivision plan entitled Eleanor Estates on Great Neck Road, also known as Assessor's Map twenty-nine, lot ten thirty in Wayham, Mass. Said plan containing two proposed lots on four acres in our sixty zoning district. Copy of the plan and application is on file with the William Planning Department, fifty-four Marion Road, it may be inspected during regular business hours, any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated.
Good evening, board members, Paul Matt.
Most of you have, um, that land that abuts Cliff Road has a for sale sign out front and I've talked to that realtor twice about this land.
Mm-hmm.
So if the board wishes I could recuse myself, or whatever you decide is appropriate, I've talked to Sue Daly, who's at Jack Conway a couple times about trying to buy that land.
Yeah.
So it hasn't gone anywhere, cause they were waiting for inch hearing, so I'll do whatever the board and the applicant would like.
You, you were interested in land on this side of Cliff's Way?
Um, there's four acres of land there that's for sa- that has a for sale sign right now from Conway and, um, I talked to Sue Daly via email, not on the telephone, but in two or three times about trying to buy that land, so I don't want it to get, uh, complicated.
You probably shouldn't recuse yourself.
That's fine, I'll still take notes, is that okay?
Sure.
That okay, Paul?
That's fine. What's that? Good evening, board members, Paul Mattels with GAF Engineering on behalf of Meredith McNeil, we're here before you for a two-lot residential subdivision off of Great Neck Road. Uh, the property is identified as map one twenty-nine, lot ten thirty, and is just slightly over four acres in size. The site is bounded by Great Neck Road to the east, Cliff Road to the south, uh, Cranberry Boggs to the west, and residential property to the north. Uh, the majority of the site is currently wooded and undeveloped, property is located within the residence R sixty zoning district and along the back portion of the property adjacent to the Cranberry Boggs, there is, uh, some flood zones on the property, uh, which are identified as a VE elevation nineteen, and AE elevation fifteen, and a shaded zone X. And that's all currently along the backside of the property here, you can see on our plan, shown as dotted lines on the plan that you have for you. Uh, the site topography ranges from elevation eight, which is closest to the bog, that's the lowest point of the site, and it ranges to elevation twenty, uh, the highest point being Great Neck Road. Uh, the entire property drains by overland flow right now in a north, uh, south to southwest direction towards the Cranberry Boggs, and there's also a slight depression on the existing side of this, uh, gravel road that comes off of Cliff Road. There's a little depression there that some stormwater gets drained towards. Uh, again, as stated before, the applicant's proposing a two-lot residential subdivision, uh, both lots have the minimum required frontage of a hundred and eighty feet and a minimum area of sixty thousand square feet. Uh, lot one thousand, ten thirty B is just over sixty-one thousand square feet, and lot ten thirty A is just over ninety-one thousand square feet. Uh, the proposed road will have, uh, an exist- will be by traveled way of a sixteen-foot wide gravel road, the roadway will be super elevated towards the south, which would drain into a, a, a drainage swell along the southerly side of Eleanor Lane. And all that water will be drained towards a cul-de-sac, which would have a rain garden design in the middle of the cul-de-sac. The proposed, uh, underground utilities will be installed along with municipal water, which will be all located within the layout of Eleanor Lane, and then each lot will have its own private sewage disposal system in accordance with Title V. We do have a perk test scheduled for next week, we'll be out there doing some test pits to, uh, verify soil conditions for the subject design. Uh, we did do a test pit inside the location of the rain garden and we did have, uh, sands with, uh, no water table found. Drain system has been designed in accordance with the stormwater management handbook and also in accordance with the subdivision rules and regulations. All stormwater will flow, again, in the southerly direction in, uh, the grass swale, and then it'll go through check dams into a four bay, which eventually discharges into the rain garden. The rain garden has been designed, uh, with a conservative infiltration rate of two point four inches per hour, and we also achieve our TSS removal prior to discharging. Uh, on the subdivision plans, we also asking for some waivers, if the board will wish to address the waivers now, we could deal with that, or if the board wants to wait till another meeting, we could deal with that after too.
Let me give us a, uh.
The list of the waivers? Okay, the waivers?
You quoted the section, but do you have it more specific? What you requesting?
Yeah, the, we're, first waiver that we're requesting is the minimum centerline radius of a curved road, uh, it requires a hundred feet minimum, but due to the existing property line here, we have a radius and the road's very tight here to get around the corner, so we're proposing a forty-foot, uh, centerline radius. Uh, also, uh, we're asking for a waiver from requiring a turnaround cul-de-sac, uh, we're just pro- proposing a sixteen by twenty-nine turnaround at the end of, at the end of the road. So here's our centerline radius that we're asking for a waiver for, and then here's, we're not proposing a standard turnaround cul-de-sac that we're just proposing a little turnaround area there for someone to back up. Uh, we're also asking for a waiver from requiring catch basins to be installed on the roadway, uh, we're proposing low impact development, which, uh, stormwater will drain into a, uh, swell and then into the rain garden. Uh, we're asking for a waiver on roadway width, we're asking for a set of being paved and, uh, required construction standards in the subdivision rules and regs, we're asking for a sixteen-foot wide road, and, uh, it would be on, uh, recycled asphalt as our base course. We're asking for a waiver for streetlights, asking for a waiver for street trees, uh, the applicant is proposing to identify trees within the right of way that will be, uh, utilized as street trees and saved prior to any clearing occurring on the property. Uh, we're also asking for a waiver on sidewalks, uh, currently there is no sidewalks on Great Neck Road, and it only being a two-lot subdivision, we don't anticipate much, uh, pedestrian access to the property. Uh, asking for a waiver on curbs, again, because we're proposing low impact development, and then, uh, asking for a waiver on fire alarms.
On fire alarms?
Correct. Subdivision rules and regs require you to put fire alarms in and typically, I don't think anybody's put one in.
We haven't done that in quite a while.
Yeah. The board has any questions, so feel free to answer them.
Any questions from the board?
Do we have engineering report on this?
Uh, I don't have anything, I don't know if it was, uh, we do have his reports in here, stormwater report, but nothing. Do you review, you're speaking of?
Yeah.
I don't know that it was.
Sent out.
Sent out.
Yeah, we haven't received any notification that Charlie was gonna charge a certain fee, that we need to provide a check, yeah, we haven't received that.
And the only subsurface you have is, is, uh, overflow for the rain garden, is that what I'm seeing?
Right.
Someone help you. That qualifies as subsurface. Questions from the board?
How long was the road?
Uh, four hundred and forty feet.
So you're looking to just bring a sixteen-foot. Drive down to the first lot B, swing it over a little bit, and then the rain garden's behind it.
Correct.
Where the cul-de-sac is shown, what is the, uh, for the emergency spillway, you're not clearing that land, are you, that's just staying with what's there?
Yeah, we're showing the tree line on sheet three or four, so you can see the tree line kinda goes right by where we have our silt fence shown.
Three or four.
Yeah. So beyond the silt fence line is remaining, uh, wooded, we're not gonna plan on clearing that.
So what's happening with the water going down the road?
The water, the water, it's, the road is super elevated towards the south, so it's gonna go into a grass swell that we have along the southerly edge of the road, and then that, that water's gonna be going all the way down to a four bay, which drains via a culver underneath the road into the rain garden, and then it actually infiltrates into the rain garden. And an emergency overflow there is just anything that exceeds a hundred-year storm.
There's no access available on Cliff's way?
No.
And the path that I see there, that's just that, just a path, that's not a, uh, ancient way of.
Just a path, yeah. No.
Ancient way.
Anything left?
No. No.
This conservation book that you're...
I've talked to Dave Pichette with it, and we do have an RDA that's before the Conservation Commission. That meeting is next Wednesday. But again, there is no work being done inside a resource area or buffer zone. We do have the flood zones, but all our work is outside the flood zone.
I don't know that, I didn't see the checklist on the plans being circulated yet.
So coming off Great Neck, the road goes up?
Slightly goes up, yes. For the first ten feet, I believe.
That's the distance? So when the water coming is gonna go back down that into Great Neck?
Correct. And not just maintaining the existing great that's there today. You can see it's following the existing contours or the existing profile that's there. If you're looking at the profile on sheet three or four.
Yeah, I'm looking at the existing and then it going up. I just don't know if you're going up whether the water's gonna come back down onto Great Neck.
Just the first ten feet of the paved apron will go onto Great Neck Road. And after that, it goes downhill and it will drain into the swell.
Looks like more than ten feet. Your high point is most of the way of that twenty-one and a half feet?
High point's at station eight, eight point foot there.
So is that station eight? Or off the roadway layout or off the traveled way?
That's off the property line, which is here. So that's eight feet, and then we have probably maybe four or five feet. So we're looking at thirteen feet. Because the entire paved apron that we're proposing at the entrance is twenty-one and a half feet wide.
Twenty-one and a half, yeah.
Why can't you come off of Cliff's Road?
We don't have any access to it. It's a private road.
So anyone here this evening that would like to comment on this proposed plan? If you would, would you come forward and use the bike, please?
Good evening. My name is Ben Sudditt, and I'm the butter next to the proposed roadway. I have some serious objections to that roadway. To start out with, if you look at the plans, plans include a twenty-foot setback around the entire property, except for our property. And this road is going to literally bound my property in. It's a gravel road. It's going to create a lot of dust. The prevailing wind is southwesterly, which will put most of that dust in my backyard and in my house. And I'm not really looking forward to that. I do feel very strongly that this road and this development, if this road is included in the development, will severely impact the value of my property. And I feel it is unjust to to put the value of my property in jeopardy so, just so that this property can be subdivided so that the owner can make more money. I would not have any objection to a single house with, with a road, a driveway to that house, which, which gave me and my wife a buffer. However, this is, to me, quite unacceptable. Thank you.
Anyone else?
For the record, Matt Rhodes is butter on the Cranberry Boggs. And I think our concern is, although there might be not, you know, there might not be a law in place that governs that, is the fact that there's no buffer zone considered within that hundred-foot buffer to the agricultural operation that's ongoing and has been ongoing for decades. And I think there is, at times, a discrepancy between residential activities and agricultural activities, and that should be given consideration. There is the hundred-foot buffer zone from conservation, but to restrict the cutting in that hundred-foot buffer zone, there's only a thirty-foot setback from the actual wetland area that can be non-cutting, if you will, which happens to fall mostly on our side. So that the potential is, even around the rain garden, since it's owned by part of the, one of the parcels, that could all be clear cut, unless that's restricted here or at a level of conservation. And, you know, the runoff is very close. And if the storm garden doesn't withhold that runoff, it then would continue to run down that elevation to the Cranberry Boggs. So those are our primary concerns. I think there's certainly, if it goes forward, that there would be room to create a green buffer area so that there is a differentiation there. And it would not impact, it would be within that hundred-foot buffer zone that exists.
Hang on, what's your name?
Matthew Rhodes.
All right, so you're, is that, this is your Cranberry Boggs already?
Yes, yes.
So there's a two percent slope to the left on the road?
Yeah.
Picks up the swell and goes down to this catchment area?
Yeah.
And then?
The road super elevates the other direction.
And then it flips and goes the other way?
Yeah.
Into the rain garden.
Two percent?
Yeah, we have it noted on the plan there, begin transitioning of road right next to the, right, just after the culver?
Oh, yeah.
At station three thirty-nine. We have a note to the side there, says begin transitioning of road across slope towards a rain garden.
So Mr. Chairman, does somebody look at the drainage culvert?
We can do that.
Small, more questions to ask?
Senator, time is again.
Sure.
I got a little nervous, but there was one other point that I did not mention, and that is that my property, or excuse me, my wife and I's, our property has a deadrived way through this property. And, and we have, that path that was mentioned earlier is, is what we have traditionally used for the past thirty years as our right-of-way to pass and repass through that property.
From where do you see?
Contrary to ancient way.
Cliff's Road?
I'm sorry.
It goes on the top of the road, right?
Our path. This, this path that's shown going through here, this path existed when we purchased this property in nineteen eighty-four. And, and we continued, we have continued to use that path as, as our deadrived way to pass, repass through this property.
Do you know if that's a fixed right-of-way or?
I do not. I do not know. All I know is that the path was there when we purchased the property. The property, the deed on property specifically states that we have the right to pass and repass. And so we continue to use that path under the assumption that the original owners constructed that path for that purpose.
So that may not affect whether this can become a lot or not, but it would certainly affect somebody buying that.
Well, they're gonna drive over the road and through the swell.
Yeah, that's... Can you come up back?
Sure.
Can I ask you a few questions? So the, so the path was, was brought up, and it's, it's a good, it's a, it's a good point. So you, you have something in your deed that says you can use that? Just out of curiosity, I mean, I've never seen it, so is it, is it a dirt road for your car to travel? Or is it just a path that you walk?
It's, it is, it's wide enough for a car to travel, but it would be a small car.
Okay. Well, because I see existing garage, you know, in on your land there towards the back.
Yeah, that's our, that's our attached garage to our house.
Sure, sure, okay. I was just curious if, if that was like a roadway that you, a driveway that you were using?
No, it is not.
Okay. So I guess that, that will be a, that'll be a pretty good question of how we're gonna handle that one.
Well, the, the thing is, I think, some, I think, was Bob just asked, or George, because I know a lot of, a lot of the properties down in Great Neck that have in their deeds to pass and repass, but they're flows. You know, it's not a set, it's not in a set area. They can, whoever owns the land can move that from one area to another. I think we ran into that quite a few times down that area. You know, they, they had the rights to pass and repass across the property, but it wasn't designated where it was at. You know, it couldn't have been further down, further up, for whatever reason. So if it's on his deed, you know, that's something that should be...
It's gonna be investigated.
Yeah.
You can move it around, but you still have to cross the road and go through the swell to get to the other side.
Yeah, right, right, right. But, but the thing is, there, there's a couple of cases going on down that area now. There's people have rights to pass and repass to get to the beach. And the problem is, is Bob says it's over here, and the other guy says, no, you can pass over there. I don't want you to go across the middle of my lawn, or whatever.
Well, there's one that goes right to a swimming pool, so.
Well, yeah, there's another one, yeah, that's a different one.
Yeah, there's one down on, Kinko or something goes right across.
Yes, right, yeah.
So, so let me just ask you a question. Because that's where I was heading next. If it's, if it's a walking path and not a driveway, where it comes onto your property now, like where, where you step off your property onto it?
Yeah.
If they were to take it where it is and they, and they swing it that way, that's, that's something you guys would work out. But it's still gonna be tough. There's still gonna be a problem there with, with the swell.
We could put a pipe in it and fill it, and it's not a big issue.
All right. So the other question that, that this gentleman had was that I'd like to ask Mr. Chairman, is the twenty-foot setback which, which you show it all the way around everything except there, is there a way we can get it? Back to his property?
Yeah, if you look at sheet three.
Well, that setback is residential for a building. That's what the setback is there. It's for a building setback. And that's what the twenty-foot side yard and rear yard is, and it's a sixty-foot front yard. And that's what the setback is. It doesn't have anything in the bylaw that says you need to have your roadway a certain distance away from the property line.
But your reduced roadway width, in effect, moves it away from the property. It's not going to, your, the roadway you're asking for will be?
Sixteen feet wide. It's in the center of a forty-foot layout.
Just, just looking at your...
It'll be twelve feet off the property line.
It looks like it's more than twelve.
It's about twelve feet.
Is it?
Yeah, so if it's twenty foot centerline and we're sixteen feet wide, so eight on either side, eight minus twenty will be twelve, so.
And there appears to be a, well, that's probably what the yard, the gap in the vegetation is.
Correct.
I have one other question?
Absolutely, that's why I asked you to come back up.
Okay, not regard, not regarding the, the right-of-way, but regarding the frontage on, on the, on the supposed cul-de-sac, I don't understand how they can have one hundred and eighty feet of frontage when there isn't one hundred and eighty feet of frontage.
Hundred and eighty feet on, on the new road, not on the...
No, but it's not a road. It's, the cul-de-sac is not a cul-de-sac. In other words, there's no, there's no turnaround. It's just, it's written on the plan, but it's...
It's, that was, that was one of the... That was one of the points that they'd asked for relief from construction. So the, the cul-de-sac will exist on paper, but not be built out. Kind of a little technical point, but that's what, that's what they...
But they've required it of, the town has required it of other properties in the neighborhood. Why, why would this property be exempt from other properties?
Well, they're asking, they're asking for some waivers. We, we haven't got to that discussion.
Okay.
They may get one, they might get two, they might not get any. It's kind of why you're all here for your input.
Very good.
It gives us think a little bit better. To be honest with you, sir, I've, I've been down Great Neck Road. I've never paid any attention to like where these lots are. So that's, that's why your input is so valuable. The engineer's doing his job. He's, he's gonna take all the bylaws and the, and the rules and regulations, and he's gonna ask for as many waivers as he can to, to, to cut some corners. Where I was gonna head with him in a second was that on a forty-foot roadway, he's got it right to the property line. That, that is if you were to look at it, at least I, I hope I'm reading it right. You're right to the property line. So there would be, if, if we made him put in that forty-foot road... You're right to the property line, so there would be, if, if we made him put in that forty-foot road, it would be right on the property line. And to me, that's kind of cheesy if you wanna come in and put two lots in behind someone else. So I was asking him if we could make the twenty-foot buffer zone, and without hesitation, he said no. So, makes me wonder, now we gotta look at it a little deeper. You, you follow me?
Yes.
And, and just, just to clarify, a forty-foot roadway is not pavement width? That's the layout with, uh?
Right, it's, but, but they'd asked for a waiver and those have been granted in the past.
Right.
But he's asking to go from a sixteen-foot paved to a sixteen-foot, like a reclamation, like a, uh, recycled material, I think, or, yeah. He's asked for, so, you know, he's asking, he's asking for a couple of waivers in one.
Right.
So we, we, we'll get to all that, but I wanted to get all the input and the information for it first. Plus it gives the engineer a little room for thought, that if he thinks he's gonna get a little better judgment if he does a little more buffering here or there, you know, maybe it helps. Some of them say no, who could care less. Now, my next question would have been with the next gentleman that came up after you, sir, was, uh, interested in the, the tree buffer zone along where his cranberry bogs are, and I think the engineer started to state with, with conservation or where he's heading with it or whatever, you know, you have the hundred-foot buffer zone that's shown and, and, and stuff like that, leave a little more trees or whatever, it might help out. He understands that he's gotta keep his water on his property.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's due diligence he's gotta do. So my next question to the applicant was gonna be, what about making sure that we keep a better tree zone? Quite frankly, he's got you here and he's got him there. He's got two guys he's gotta keep happy. I'm not happy when I hear no, real quick. No discussion, no thought, just no. That doesn't fly with me. I, I'm a builder. But I'm just telling you, um, I think he can do a little better tree zone over here, and I think he could probably do a little something with you there. He also is, is, is helping us engineering-wise, because he's a professional engineer, I'm not. He's gonna show us where the center of that road would be and how much more buffer he can give you, but we wanna squeeze it as much as we can to help the abutter.
Thank you.
He doesn't, he, I, I, you know, I mean, he's, he's gonna sell these things, but he certainly doesn't wanna sell them to someone with, with, with neighbors that are already loaded. You, you don't need that. You wanna make everybody happy. So that, that's kind of why the hearing is there, so I, I would suggest you all get your comments and come on up and let's hear them all, so.
Now, did you push the roadway that way for, for sake of the shape factor, or is there another?
Yeah, basically the shape factor, you could see where it is. It's very tight and there's no, no other place to put it.
Yes, sir. Well, I like a saddle, I wanted the abutters. I just, I don't know that much about roads and things, but, um, I'm still confused why it isn't a full cul-de-sac so fire, you know, safety equipment can make a complete turnaround, and how it can just be frontage on paper. And I've heard some of the earlier cases, you would just re, re, uh, refuting that, you can't just have a, a road on paper. It's gotta be, um, deeded or legal, so I just, I'm just asking the question. I don't understand how it could be a, on paper, called frontage and not be a full turnaround, uh, cul-de-sac, especially, uh, when it, it comes down to, uh, fire apparatus driving down the road.
Uh, a lot of times when it's very limited service, like one lot, people will ask for a waiver of, of construction points, like the cul-de-sac, uh, some of the other things you heard was, uh, catch basins, uh, lights, trees, things that are in a normal subdivision, uh, bylaw under road construction. And where it's limited to one piece of property, they'll ask for some relief on some of those expenses. So what you see is a layout for what is required under a bylaw or a regulation. And then they will, you know, that space will always be there, should anyone decide to build it out. But recognizing that servicing one house is very little impact, you know, sometimes some relief is granted. So that's why, that's why you, you're not seeing the full build-out on the subdivision, on the cul-de-sac is because they've asked for relief on that.
Let's hope that's why, safety-wise, though.
I know nothing about this, but I lived down the end of Great, uh, the end of Cliff's Road, and I went from a two-rudded path, right?
Could you identify yourself?
Jamie Novo.
Okay, thank you.
I assumed that, that, I went from a, a two-lane rudded path to a grand highway that is now Cliff's Road with a great cul-de-sac at the end of it for two houses. And when it went in, I said, I got this huge waste of, 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 you know, that, that we did for two houses. So I would be interested to know why it just seems so different when I lost my little road to now when we can have a driveway, because, because there's only two houses on, on, on Cliff's Road.
And where, where are you, ma'am?
I go, if you go around the cul-de-sac, at the end of Cliff's Road, and keep going, I'm off the beaten path.
Where, 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 where your elbow is?
Where, where your, where your elbow is, yes.
So, you, you, you come down here?
If you go. Through Cliff's Road, I'm down here.
You can cut through here?
I can cut through there.
That with a?
At the moment, quite legally.
You can, you can drive through there?
Yes.
Do you have a deed?
Yes, that's what I said, at the moment legally. Yes, I have a deed.
So. Okay, so, so you can get down through there?
Yeah, because actually Cliff's Road goes all the way down here, but they made them pull this cul-de-sac in just to put these two houses in. So now, my, my thing is, so why do we not have to have a cul-de-sac? Because, and I, I heard that we have to fire department around, we have to, you know.
Yeah.
And so my, my curiosity is, why do we, uh, it, it, why do we, would you submit a plan that, that in the driveway with two houses on it? I would love to have had that there.
You would love to have what?
Sorry.
The driveway with two houses?
I'm curious, I'd be curious to know where I could look to see whether or not that came up for Cliff's Road, because I'm sure that, um, you can spend that money for nothing.
I, going from memory, I don't think it was requested.
It was not requested?
I don't think so. I think this was the plan submitted, but I'd have to, I'd have to recheck, but. Yeah, and I don't wanna get too far astray, but if that's what, if that's what was submitted and they didn't ask for any waivers other than the gravel road, then that's what they would have done.
I guess, thank you.
So how many houses, there are more houses if you keep on going down?
There are two more houses if you keep going past.
Past the cul-de-sac?
Past the cul-de-sac, there are two more houses.
But they were there before anything.
Yeah.
And is that, that the same pathway you have? That path continues down here?
Yes.
To the water?
It goes through that path every day, but it works.
Tough commute, huh?
Yeah.
What do we have for distance between roadways to wave them?
No, he's just looking the same thing. I was flipping that road over.
Well, even, even if you pulled it away at the expense of the shape factor, even if you pulled it away so you could get the radius in on both sides.
You know, hard time making your shape factor available.
But you can adjust, you can compensate for the, you know, we can adjust for the shape factor if we.
I believe in a great spot, Cliff's Road, because I'm able to vaguely remember when Cliff's Road went in there. It's like an airstrip going to, uh, Norway.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly, exactly.
If someone wants to give us deeded rights to Cliff's Road, we'll take it.
I won't say it. If you had bases with Cliff's Road, you could get three lots.
No, we can't. We still only get two.
Yeah, you got those buffers to go. Uh, any other questions, concerns?
Yeah. Why in the name of Ed you can't use Cliff's Road to service?
Please tell them this table.
Could you, could you come up and use the?
My name is Ben Sutter also.
You any relation to the other Sutter?
Quite closely.
Just checking.
I do not understand how, all my life I've been back and forth on Cliff's Road, he's a cousin of mine. And all of a sudden, they make this parkway, pathway to the cul-de-sac and the two lots that my daughter refu- re, si- brought up. And I don't understand why this road that is big and drains fine, doesn't have any potholes, that, that can't be used to service these two lots that are in contention. It, it, it just doesn't make sense.
Well, it's a privately owned roadway, and unless they wanna grant you, grant the, the abutter rights to it, they don't have any. If it were a town way, yes, it would be, it would have frontage.
So they did away with everybody's right of way to go to the shore.
Well, the people that had that right still have it.
Yeah, right. They, and they go over, over that repaired, repaired road that used to be Cliff's Road.
Yeah. But if, if, you know, if the owners, which I take it there's two unless somebody retained ownership of the roadway separately, I mean, if they were to agree to grant access here, then they could get their frontage off of Cliff's Way.
You've explained it to me, thank you.
That was one of the options that we discussed with the current owner, and she said that she's already pursued that option and she wasn't allowed to do that, or maybe the fee that the guy was asking for was a little outrageous or something, and she wasn't willing to pay that amount of money. Again, I'm not a hundred percent sure what the cause was, but that was pursued. Because it made perfect sense. Why go through the expense of going through, uh, definitive subdivision when you could do an A and R plan? You know? Don't notify the abutters, no public hearing, just get the A and R plan approved.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I, I suppose I should speak up. I'm one of the abutters. Uh, we just purchased the land on Cliff's Road, um.
Could, could you identify yourselves?
Robert Santos, your wife's Mary Ann Monsoar. We bought this land here, and this is the Agassalo's, I mean. And, uh, we understood that there are people that have deeded rights to use that road, which is, which is perfectly fine. Um, and I feel for some of the individuals, there, there obviously is a misunderstanding on why this road cannot be used. I can say for me and my wife, the whole intention of building and buying this property is because it had a private road. So now I have a concern on whether or not, because it's a nice road now, but the more homes, more cars you drive on it, it's not gonna be so nice as far as I'm concerned. So, I think now you're gonna have, you're gonna have a, a small frontage on that Great Neck Road for these two properties. They're squeezed between a Matt Rhodes property within the Suddards, and then Cliff's Road. So, my concern, whether right or wrong, is whether or not these individuals will find a way to utilize Cliff's Road, which would create a problem for us down the line. I don't know. I, I really can't make that assumption, but I, I, I think that could be a problem down line. Because you really, the, this right here, you really can't, a fire truck, you really can't turn around in here. They have to drive in and then they have to back up. So is there gonna be a fire hydrant here? How do you connect that? Do they use a fire hy- fire hydrant here? I don't know.
Mr. Santos, you guys have a homeowners association between you and your neighbor?
We thought about starting one.
Who owns Cliff's Road now? You own it jointly together?
We just, yeah, we, we purchased the land in oh seven, and we're actually just building now. We have a foundation that's just been completed a couple of days ago. So, I, I can say, uh, that I have no intention of providing approval to utilize this road, because it's not why we purchased this property. We purchased this property because it had a private road. Okay?
And this, this property as a whole, do they have deeded rights to these footpaths of water access or anything?
Uh, that I'm not, I, I don't know off the top of my head. I'll have to ask a person in the office who did all the actual work on the plant, so.
Any other questions? Any other information you need?
Actually, you just asked a question. Uh, it shows a path, it shows a path, um, up from the Suddard property down through lot, you know, ten thirty dash B to Cliff's Road. And right now, I believe the gentleman said he does not drive through it, but they can pass through it. So, but ten thirty dash A, I don't see any pathway or ancient way or, or whatever on that, um, on that piece. So, is there a house? Does anybody know on lot B four, Paul, the Castleau, Castle, however you say his name? Is there a house there?
Yes.
Agassalo.
That's me, Paul Agassalo.
I, oh, that's, I'm sorry, I have your name wrong, but, so your house is there, and now the, Mr. Santos and his wife have bought the other one. So that piece of, that Cliff's, that, that Cliff's Road, you pay to put that in?
No, the builders, I personally paid for it. I, I, the price of the, my lot was about another hundred and twenty-five thousand more to cover the, uh, a rather who, uh, I think it was, you know, Michael Powers, you know, developed it. So the lot at one time is the whole thing, both our lots was three hundred and fifty thousand for the whole parcel. Then Michael Powers went before the planning board, put the, put the, cut the road in underground utilities and sold the two, uh, put the lots up for sale at three seventy-five and three fifty, because it was quite expensive to put the road in. So, that's the reasoning why Bob and I, you know, wanna just, with all the money we spent just for the land alone, you know, just give, you know, all of a sudden give access to, uh, Reverend McNeil.
To two other, to two other lots.
Yeah.
But you, you still, but you have no problem with the other two parties that traveled through it?
Oh, no.
That get, get to their houses?
No, they have.
So they have, is it deeded?
Yeah, they, they, they have, there's like four people that live beyond the cul-de-sac, they're, it's all deeded right to pass and repass.
All right.
And they've all been great neighbors and it's, and we, and we all get along just fine, sure.
Is there any other people in the neighborhood, uh, say from Rosa's property or further up, that have rights on the ancient way down to the beach?
I don't believe so. I believe it, um, you know, Rosa Suddards, Matt Stone, who's right here, you know, Ben and Dean are.
Because, you know, here we go again, back in the olden days, there, there's an ancient way goes from the top of Lincoln Hill all the way down to Swiss Beach. People don't realize.
It goes through, uh, back of Schutz. It's an ancient way that goes all through there. Uh, there was, you know, if you go back in the deeds, you go way back, so people that, way, they're far away, that rights to pass and repass, so they can make, make their way down to the beaches, you know, way back in the olden days. And over the years, um, subdivisions like this come in, they get cut off.
And over the years, subdivisions like this come in, they get cut off. For some reason, they don't get re-recorded or whatever, and people lose their rights.
In this case, Ethel Burgess was the written, the Griselda Farmhouse. And Walmsley's in here, I think getting foreclosed, but they have also a right to re-pass because these were all recorded. And I get my, you know, my paternity check out, you know, we're going to spend that much money for land, and it's all, it's all been on, they're ancient right away, so the Burgess estate, but they're all been recorded over the years as it's been subdivided because it was all her land at one time. So every time when she passed away and they went to probate and they made, well, four lots out of it, everyone has a right to pass to the water because that was her original intention.
Okay, Bob's going to yell at me because you're not at the table, so. Thank you, though. Kind of information you require?
Well, we better be in the prior time, it's got to send something in on the waiver on the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
You know, if that did fly.
I'll make sure that the plan's got checked later.
All right. Question for you, for the applicant, please, Mr. Jim. Just taking a look at how you have the sixteen-foot road, you have it pitched to get to the grass swale. I'm just wondering, as you come in off of Great Neck Road, can you pull it, can you pull itself a little bit? And I'm just, and my only reasoning for that was, one of butters concerned was he didn't have the twenty-foot buffer zone along there. As far as the ancient path or the deeded rights, you guys will have to deal with all that. But what I'm getting at is, I'm trying to get the two concerns that were brought up were really a buffer zone. Let's just deal with step one first. If we slide the road this way, the drive, as we call it, because it's not going to be really a road if you don't follow all the, but anyway, pull it a little bit this way. What did you say you had, twelve feet from the?
Yeah, twelve feet, yes.
All right, I don't know if we're going to get a full eight feet, but...
I could pull, I could hold twenty feet if you like. Just the drainage swale's not going to be within the road layout and you're going to have an easement on the property and stuff like that, which I don't have an issue with. I'll have to discuss it with the current owner, if she's willing to do that. But we could provide a more of a buffer if we wanted to by shifting the road inside the layout. Instead of having it centered in the layout, we'll have it offset.
Yeah. Well, what I'm getting at is, you have a lot of land there, you know? You're going to build a house there, somehow we're going to get a house there. My point being is that the butters been there for years and years and years and if there's a twenty-foot buffer around the whole thing and you're only giving twelve at him, let's see what we can do to slide things around to give him his twenty. That's step one. Conservation wise, when you get to the other point, we're into a twofold system, in my opinion, sir, is number one, where the cul-de-sac is going to be, to pave that, you're going to have a problem with conservation because you run through the hundred-foot buffer, so that wouldn't work. So I understand, so that's part of the reason you don't build it out. But needless to say, what's good for one should be good for the other. If one come in, he puts in the cul-de-sac, if a fire engine can get around it, fine. We'll see what the fire department says. I personally wouldn't have a problem if you have the road come down and the driveway serves the first one and the driveway serves the second one. I don't have a problem with a circular pavement if it wasn't there, as long as the fire department can maneuver and do what it has to do. Because I do understand with the buffer zone why you wouldn't build it. But I think, I think that's some issues we need to take a look at. Go back to your client, whatever, and see what you can do. Because I think if you appease the two gentlemen that stepped up, one had a problem with twenty feet here, the other had a little problem with some vegetation in front of his bog, whatever, so the water doesn't get down there. I understand both those concerns, so let's address those while you're taking a look at some other things. And I think the rest of the board, you know, probably has some opinions as well. It's just my opinion. But I think we should address those two concerns right out of the gate.
And also have to find out what kind of accommodations you have to make for that pathway.
Correct.
Yeah, again, that, you know, I mean, with his deeds, I wasn't trying to be funny to the person. I was just saying, you have a deed, well, guess what? Some people do have a deed and you'd be up against it. Engineering wise, you guys are a pretty good firm. You'd, you know, put a pipe in, go over the swale, whatever you had to do, I understand that. So that would be, I guess, my three or four points right off Mr. Chairman that he needs to take a look at is, number one, that pathway. Number two, slide that road just a bit to give the buffer zone to Mr. Suddard's property equal to what's shown on the rest of the drawings. And also where the buffer zone from conservation is, to make sure that he gets a little, shows a little bit better on his drawing that the, Mr. Rhodes, I think it was. Sorry, I don't remember names.
You'll crank Rhodes.
With Mr. Rhodes is, see what you can do with that. So when they take a look at the plan the second time around, they see that you've adjusted things to make it a little bit better. As far as the other side, Cliff's, you know, I mean, they have legitimate reasons why they don't want to let you in there, then you can't get in there, so.
My concern would be having somebody look at that drainage couch, but two reasons. One of them is, you want to make sure there's enough capacity in that area. So, there's a spillway, but you don't want to use the spillway because it's going into cranberry bogs and wetlands.
Right.
And I don't know, I think at least thirteen feet, I would say. Sixteen feet wide, you got a fairly wide area that's going to go dump right into Great Neck right there. I don't know if that's going to be an issue, but certainly somebody could...
Well, I think...
When they look at the drainage, they could look at that as well.
I think it's...
You know, it's still spilling in there, freezing. I don't know what the condition of the road is.
Going around the corner in my driveway.
That would be a point two. I don't know which way, which way the road is right there.
Yeah. Well, I suppose with the waivers and all that are asked for, I think we should have Charlie Porton, you have to take a look at it.
We can do that. We'll save the low impact water, doesn't tend to travel in fire, but...
Yeah.
So reclaimed asphalt is what?
Recycled asphalt, crushed up asphalt.
So it's going to be like a gravel road?
Correct.
No, it's going to be like an asphalt road.
Yeah, it binds up pretty good. You'll get a little water through it where pavement, it would run right across. With that, it lets some water in.
Trying to see which way the elevation goes.
Unless you roll it on a hot, hot day.
I think that's up here.
Yeah, I was just concerned because...
So it's good working back there.
You know, that's a pretty big area.
Yeah.
It's a big slope, and you don't know, you don't want it sitting there. You don't want this road crowns and it's all going to sit in there.
So, I will...
What time do you think you need to get your information, a couple of weeks?
Well, we got to wait for Charlie's review, and Charlie hasn't submitted a fee yet, so I'm thinking I probably could wait till the second meeting.
Come on, man, tell him cat, man.
First meeting in December, I guess, because I'm not sure. Are you guys meeting on the week of Thanksgiving or? So definitely not going to have any more information on the week of Thanksgiving. At least I'm on my end, other than saying, yeah, I can move the road suddenly a little bit and whatever buffer we're providing towards the cranberry bog. But other than that, I don't think Charlie's going to be done with his review and we won't have any chance or input to provide on Charlie's comments or review letter. So I'm thinking if we wait until December, I don't know if it's eighth?
Eighth. Okay.
You know, give Charlie a couple of weeks to do it and a couple of weeks for us to respond and I and you have issues that we might have with Charlie.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to December eighth, seven o'clock.
So move.
Second. Any discussion?
Moving now, all in favor?
For those of you, we will continue this process at that point after some review by the engineer and some other, some other information we're looking for.
Correspondents, let's see.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Long night.
Long night.
Yeah. I don't remember where I was.
No, he didn't answer anything because...
Yes, sir, can we help you?
He said, he said, I want to be a community member. He said, well, what was I going to say? I got a waiver, which is a progress. First question.
I like the...
You like that?
After going with my...
Yeah, I didn't understand.
Well, the thing is...
Sneaky thing, no overgrowth, we seeded it well.
We know the way Great Neck, we know the way Great Neck Road was before. But the thing is, you know, he kept what, so he got his money for it. But that belongs at Holbrook or someplace like that. Great Neck, Great Neck is, is rural, beats country, you know.
Two just people?
No, no, no.
There's another one, a green gate lane, the airstrip. It hurts.
We have, looks like minutes here for September twenty-second? Oh, no, this is...
Not on the agenda.
No, that's not minutes, that's just an old agenda. I don't know what that's doing. Guess I got to do some house cleaning. We had a letter from, I did get it regarding the Wayham, the Walmart Outpostle. They request relief from condition number eleven, and I got a letter from their engineer saying condition eleven was something else, so I think it was just misnumbered.
What are they looking at?
They want a relief from the requirement that they get a modification from the Board of Appeals.
And that's the Board of Appeals has all worked up over that, haven't they?
Well, it was embarrassing. Especially when you read documents that say how business friendly they are and how bad the planning board is.
I remember a lot of it, and that's why I remember a couple of members saying to me...
That's what I wanted to do. As soon as I was like, I'll be sure to the guy.
Oh, this is a copy of the approval of the railway siding on Main Street.
What?
This was a copy of the approval of the rail siding on Main Street. Came in after it was already, it was already done and operating.
That's going to blow off the first one.
You think so?
Are you kidding me?
The pitch is towards the harbor.
Those things ain't going down the fort.
Have you seen what they've done to it this week?
Yeah, they're putting that lead to, that's going to blow right off.
Are you kidding me? Main Street will blow away, that stuff will still be there. I think they put those pilings down to refusal.
Thirty feet down.
They bolted it to wood for the top.
That's good stuff.
And putting it like that is nice, it's like a sand...
I'm just going through correspondence here to see if I missed anything. Mario did ask for another month extension as he's...
Well, I thought he had a letter from the bank that he was, he was all set. He was prince with the vice president or president?
He did. He came back with another letter because we changed, he wanted to change the date. Because he supposedly has all his lots sold and he can get them, he can get all the rough work done before...
Oh, he has the lots sold, he's not building houses?
He's building houses, but he can have the foundations in and all the heavy stuff done if you give him another month.
Okay.
Uh, the rest of this stuff, good thing he took notes.
I have notes today, too.
I'm doing some house cleaning. So I guess that's all I have.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn is non-debatable.
Majority rules.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at ten oh seven. Thank you, Bob.